Call this meeting to order. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, October 1st, 2019. We only have one agenda item, so we're going to hyper-focus today, which I'm glad of, a presentation of financial review of county operations by Crowe Consulting in partnership with the CBC and the CRBC, and the county, I might say. So, thank you all for being here. Thank you for the work that you've done. I know you have met with all three county commissioners to give us an overview of your presentation today, and we are looking forward to having the public now also as part of this conversation related to your report and our budget and ongoing challenges at the county. So, please come forward, and I don't know which one of you is going to present, but yeah.
Madam President, if I could, I'll just, for the publics, especially those watching at home, I'll just give a brief tee-up on kind of the history here. So, as the board is aware, back in 2018, as we were looking to balance the general fund budget, we were dealing with a significant budget gap of between $20 and $30 million. We ultimately balanced the 2019 budget using one-time resources, service reductions, and new revenues, including a one mil increase to the property transfer tax. We recognized at the time that many of the decisions we made in balancing were not sustainable in the long run. We have many of those that will come back and revisit us for the 2020 budget, things like balancing departmental budgets based upon one-time use of grant funds, et cetera. The one example we've used in the past is we have the entire firearms division of the coroner's office balanced using a grant fund that will no longer exist. So, and that's even before you got to talking about some of the major policy priorities that the board has, be it things like addressing the 911 problem, the 911 funding problem, addressing economic development and community revitalization, talking about the 200-plus million in deferred maintenance that we have on county buildings, and infrastructure, IT investments that ultimately could help us work more efficiently but still require investment upfront to make that happen. So, as we were passing that budget, we also began engaging at the board's direction with the CBC and the CRBC to bring in an outside party to do an objective analysis of the county's budget, recognizing that we were going to have these same issues confronting us in 2020. So, we did that. We split the cost of this with the CBC and the CRBC, and we brought in Crowe, who is here today with us. We have Alicia Antonetti-Tricker. We also have Jeff Eckert with us, and they have been onsite over the past several months, working with the county, working with the CBC and the CRBC, and the work group that that group has put together to help us through this as well. They've done deep dives on a huge amount of things with our staff, so we want to thank them for their patience as we've gotten the materials, et cetera. But ultimately, their work was divided into two phases. Phase one was an overview and assessment of the county's financial situation, and phase two is a, which they are getting ready to go into now, phase two is a deeper dive, look at a lot of more longer-term options for the county. So, today is their wrap-up and recommendation presentation as it relates to phase one, which is the initial analysis. It's a timely presentation in that we are in our budget process right now. We had hoped to get this, the entire process started a little bit earlier. We did not, but Crowe was very gracious in working with us to make sure that we got to this point of a phase one recommendation prior to going into our budget process. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia for the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you for having me. As Jeff said, my name is Alicia Antonetti-Tricker. I'm a principal at Crowe, and I lead our local government consulting practice. And we've really enjoyed working with you and your team, and we have a handful of slides to cover today and be happy to answer questions as we go through. So, as Jeff mentioned, if you turn to slide two, we've been working with you all and also the Cincinnati Regional Business Committee and the Cincinnati Business Committee to explore the state of the county's financial and operational status and look at opportunities to increase revenue, reduce costs, and create efficiencies. And as Jeff mentioned, we are doing this through a two-phased approach. So, we kicked off our project together in early July with the idea of, let's cast a wide net, and let's explore the county as a whole. We did focus on the general fund, knowing that's where some of the structural imbalance components are, so really have been casting a wide net over the general fund, and then exploring opportunities to potentially look at savings and create efficiencies moving forward. We conducted over 30 interviews around the county, meeting with you all, and then also with all of the different departments. And through that process, we were able to gather a lot of information to help inform our phase one effort. So, today we're at a crossroads of taking phase one effort and moving into phase two. So, we plan on presenting you today some of the information that we gathered during the phase one approach, and some thoughts and ideas we have as we work with you as we head into phase two. As we assessed the financials, we looked back to 2008, and we thought this was important to go back to 2008, knowing that there was a financial crisis that ensued between 2008 and 2009, and saw a decrease in both revenues and expenses. And we were looking for trends. And those trends that we've explored and uncovered during this timeframe and analysis are on your slide, and I think it's probably no surprise to all of us that revenues have been not growing at the same rate as expenses, particularly in the last few years. What's been great is revenues have been in alignment with budgets, but sometimes expenditures have exceeded budget annually. And again, probably not a surprise to this group. There have been repairs and maintenance to buildings, unexpected expenditures with staff, rising medical costs, et cetera. There's also been fluctuation with intergovernmental funds over this timeframe, and that's everything from funds received from the state to fluctuating with grant revenues. One thing that we did uncover, which is actually pretty not uncommon, is it was unclear if the costs of some of the service delivery were being covered by user fees. And so, that could be an area of potential exploration as we move into phase two. And one of the other observations were your general fund revenues, particularly related to sales tax, trailed peer counties on a per-capita basis. So, as a whole, your general fund is smaller on a per-capita basis than some of the peer counties, and we'll talk some more about that. Moving on to the next slide, we looked again at the historical revenues and expenses across all your funds between 2008 to the end of 2018, which was the last complete year, and have looked at the 2019 situation and then the go-forward budget as well. And as you can see from the picture, that all funds have been decreasing and have started to uptick starting around 2013, 2014, but are still not back at the same level as pre-2008. Zeroing in on the general fund, our general fund, looking at that 11-year look-back, we went from revenues in 2008 to roughly $260 million to dropping substantially, and then creeping back up starting in 2013 with a 2018 budget of revenue of $247.5 million. So, even 11 years later, we were still not back up at the 2008 numbers. I guess it's very indicative of the county doing more with less over a period of time, as many jurisdictions across the country have had to do. Of note, we do note at the bottom that general fund revenues and expenses have been increasing at a faster pace since 2015, and that's something that we have drilled into. Increase in personnel costs, particularly related to benefits and healthcare as part of that, need for building maintenance, and a couple of other areas have factored into that increase at a faster pace. We thought it was also interesting to look at the mix of general fund revenue in the primary areas, from property tax, sales tax, licenses, service fees, fines and forfeitures, intergovernmental and miscellaneous. So, looking back and comparing 2008 to 2018, some consistencies, a few differences, but this was something interesting to see how revenue has fluctuated over this 11-year period. As part of our analysis, we also wanted to see, how does Hamilton County compare to peers across the state? So, we've pulled data.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can we, we're going to go ahead and ask questions as we go.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I really am. But in your general revenue mix, the slide you just discussed, there has been a fluctuation, if you look at the raw numbers.
Yes.
Given the, did, do you know how that would look if you adjust for the gross decline in revenues? So, for example, let's say, intergovernmental. It was 20.9% in '08, 17.9% in '18. But if we adjusted down, what the percentage difference is between the total gross revenue or general fund revenue mix in '08 of 260.6 versus 2018 of 247.5, and you apply that same percentage differential to the expenses mix in the right column, do you know what those numbers would look like adjusting for just general decline in revenue?
For intergovernmental specifically?
No, just for the whole thing. So, I think, you know, the statement is made, or the conclusion to be drawn is that, one, our revenue mix has gone down, but I think you also said, same time, that there have also been different changes within the various different types of revenues. And I'm just wondering what those percentages would look like if we simply adjusted down. Do you know what I'm saying? By the percentage amount? Or maybe they'd be the same. Maybe I'm just confused. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I want to make sure. We have, we've looked at this data a lot of different ways, Commissioner. So, we have looked at this data a lot of different ways. So, for intergovernmental specifically, we have seen a fluctuation. We can usually see why for different reasons. The state has provided more money and less money. We haven't backed it out and done a true apples-to-apples comparison if that money never existed. That is something that we could consider exploring during our phase two, and that's what's exciting about the opportunity where we're at today, is we have casted a fairly wide net on looking at this analysis, and we all know we have a lot of questions still. And so, as we move to phase two, we're gathering those questions and hope to be able to zero in on some of those key target areas during our phase two analysis. So, Commissioner, that might be one of the areas that we look at together as we explore into phase two.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Good discussion. So, I mentioned that we looked at peer counties in Ohio as part of the analysis, and we looked at Montgomery County, Franklin County, Summit County, and Cuyahoga County. And probably not surprising, we were in the middle of those four counties in terms of the general fund revenue. And as you see from slide seven, our revenue has relatively remained flat over a five-year look-back history, as has Montgomery and Summits. We see some rise in Franklin County, primarily likely attributed to a sales tax increase that they had around the 2014 timeframe, and that's where you see that fluctuation and jump then. But primarily, if we look at pure counties, there's been a lot of consistency in this trend of remaining relatively fat, flat in terms of the general fund revenue.
Can I ask a question on this one? So, Montgomery County recently did increase their sales tax. Is that reflected in this chart?
They increased their sales tax in 2018, so we looked through 2017. But if you look at 2018, you will see a bump.
Thank you.
We also looked at the different percentages in the general fund across our peer counties. And what we thought was interesting here, as you look at the breakdown on a percentage basis of revenue by peer county, how each county is funding their general fund. And you can see Hamilton County is on the far left, followed by Franklin, Cuyahoga, Montgomery, and Summit. And you'll see some differences in percentages on how revenues support general fund expenditures. So, in Hamilton, 32% sales tax with 16% property tax and 22% charges for services as the top three. In Franklin, roughly 63% in sales tax, followed by 10% in property taxes, and of course, the 11% in charges for services. In Cuyahoga County, 54% for sales tax and 15% for charges for services, 17% were miscellaneous revenues. Montgomery County, 46% sales tax, 11% charges for services, and 11% intergovernmental. And in Summit, 39% sales tax and 19% property taxes with 21% miscellaneous revenue, kind of rounding that one out. This was more just a question that the working group had posed to us about how are other of our peer counties funding their general funds? And so, we thought this analysis would be helpful as we explore opportunities to help look at opportunities for revenue enhancement within Hamilton County's general fund. Any questions on this slide?
Just a comment. I noticed we are far more dependent on the intergovernmental, the state grants and federal grants than almost double the other counties are. So, as that depletes from the governor down, and we don't get those local government funding, we were really in trouble. Yeah.
Madam President, Alicia, just a quick note. Budget Director Brugan had informed me, and Commissioner Portune, I'm not sure if this addresses your question as well, but he had informed me that intergovernmental revenue between this time of 2008 versus 2018 is down 14% versus all other revenue sources, which are down 5%. So, if that helps kind of add some color to that question. Okay.
I want to also note the, we're reliant on, it looks like, more reliant on property taxes, as you said, intergovernmental dollars, and less reliant on sales tax. It's really striking how much lower we are in the sales tax related to all the other counties, and how reliant we are on other funding sources as opposed to the other counties. So, I too am kind of noting the same thing here.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I may, I think what we're seeing here also is the effect of, the ongoing lingering effect of the voters' decision in 1996 to support a half-cent sales tax for the construction of stadiums along our riverfront. The other counties that we are compared against, I believe, and Alicia, correct me if I'm wrong, but they do not have a special sales tax increase or any sales tax increase, I guess for that matter. And I'm not talking about fluctuations in revenue. I'm talking about voted-in increases for something like that that is a luxury item as opposed to basic general governmental services of one form or another. So, as a consequence, for us to remain competitive with our peer counties in the state and with the counties that circumnavigate us in Ohio, we find ourselves having fewer sales tax revenues coming in on a comparative basis than they do for that very reason. So, to state it further, if we're at seven, you know, a 7% effective sales tax rate, and some other county is an effective 7% sales tax rate, they're seven, that's 7% of them, or their county portion of 1.5% or whatever that might be, all goes to the running of the government. With us, our percentage, our sales tax in gross, the 1.5 out of that or, you know, the comparative number, a half-cent of that is not going to running the government. It's going and hiring sheriff's deputies and paving the roads and providing what the auditor needs, or the recorder for recording deeds, and all those sorts of things. Ours, instead, a half-cent is going to the riverfront development, which has been good in its own right in generating revenues for us as well. But I think this is showing why that's so different, and as a consequence, to run the general government, we've had to look to other sources of revenue to either A, pick up a larger share of the road, or B, just naturally, they are a greater percentage in comparison to the whole because our sales tax revenue is not all going to running the government.
Yep. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we also looked at expenditures as a whole and compared it to peer counties as well. And what we looked at was total expenditures and the total general fund expenditures as a percentage of the overall budget. And what we found is, on a whole, Hamilton County's general fund expenditures as a whole was 16.7%, which is less than your peer counties. Could mean a lot of different things. So, on a percentage basis, your general fund is likely smaller than your peer county's general fund sizes as well.
I'm sorry, Madam President. Alicia, if I could.
Absolutely.
So, this is a, I think, a good, high-level barometer of just general, a general look at general fund expenditures, and similar to what Commissioner Portune was, almost another way to get at what Commissioner Portune was talking about in terms of general fund expenditures or tax revenue going towards the work of the government, if you will. So, in addition to that, I know you guys plowed into a lot of additional data on a department-by-department basis, and I know that's not in this presentation today, but you did a huge amount of that. Could you speak just high-level to what you saw and what conclusions you might draw from, as you benchmarked those expenditures against other peer counties, how Hamilton County ranks or stacks up in terms, from an efficiency and a benchmarking perspective? Or did you see costs in county departments much higher, much lower, middle of the pack? What did you tend to see there?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. That's a great question. We did explore this quite, in quite a bit of detail at the department level. And just as an example, we'll take, you know, the cost of processing court cases. The cost of processing court cases, yours is considerably less on a case basis than some of your peer counties. And I think that's an interesting takeaway. You could look at that from an efficiency perspective, or we've had to do a lot more with less. But on a case basis, our per-case cost is lower than our peer communities. Other questions? Okay, one area that we wanted to note, and I believe it's been discussed as part of the 2020 proposed budget, is looking at your general fund balance.
Yeah. I'm just a little slow to process everything today.
No worries. I moved along fast there.
Are we finding the same throughout in terms of our comparisons to our peer counties in the state of Ohio, that their other revenues are sort of fluctuating at the same rate that ours are, with that one exceptional difference being that a half-cent of our sales tax money is going to a specific purpose, as opposed to just the general fund in operating the functions of government outside of economic development through that special-purposed sales tax? I mean, are we just, are we seeing that throughout the whole thing? And I guess what I'm saying in a different way is, all things being equal, are our gross expenditures compared to other peer cities of everything other than sales tax on expenses roughly the same in terms of degrees of fluctuation from year to year? The exceptional difference being that we're more dependent on them as a percentage of the whole because we have fewer sales tax revenues coming in as a percentage of the whole.
So, we did look at expenditures and how the revenue was funding different expenditures. And what's interesting as a whole, I think you're seeing common trends across your peer organizations. How the money is being used, though, you know, does differ, you're right, in terms of the evidence we have found with Hamilton County having a dedicated portion to a restricted fund is unique based off of our analysis. Doesn't mean that there isn't something else like that out there, just we were unable to uncover it. From an expenditure perspective, as we look at departments, two of the peer communities are structured a little bit differently than Hamilton County. So, we look, two of the peer counties are charter government organizations, and so, their budget looks a little bit different, and it's always hard to create an apples-to-apples comparison with those peer communities as well. But on the whole, I would say you're seeing trends, and Hamilton County appears to be in the middle.
And specifically, those other two counties, given people are watching this or writing about this, who may not know, so when they're looking at this information on your slides, can't account for that necessarily. We're talking about Summit County and Cuyahoga County.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Thank you. So, one area that we looked at as well was looking at your general fund balance. And something that we often compare with from a benchmarking perspective is using information from GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association. And one of the key takeaways that we uncovered, and I know your staff has been looking at this as well, is your general fund balance. And as a best practice, according to GFOA, you want to have a minimum of two months of operating revenue. Hamilton County is a little bit below that right now. And while GFOA will say, you know, especially larger communities, you know, there's going to be some fluctuation in that, and it's not uncommon that this is the case, it's something that caught our eye. And so, want to make sure as we're looking at this overall assessment, particularly as we move to phase two and look for that longer-term financial stability, that we're looking at opportunities to help you fund the general fund balance to make sure that we're keeping the health of the county alive for years to come. So, more of an observation than anything at this point.
I do want to say it's not for lack of trying.
Understand.
To keep that balance. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the, well, just, so as we go, we always try to hit a certain responsible target. As the county, as some of the departments overspend, we are then in a position to take it from somewhere. And so, I think that we're looking at that right here.
Certainly partly that, partly back to what we talked about in one of the first slides, which is the, as we get into the second half of the year, typically, we start to hear more from our facilities department about infrastructure and building needs, things, systems that have failed, et cetera. And it's at that point of the year that we start making that assessment about, we would certainly like to be at a 15% reserve, but we need to start prioritizing repairs over reserve balance replenishment. So, I think what strikes me about this slide is not necessarily that we're under in any one year, but that we're consistently under, and we have not been able to get back to that 15% rate recommended by GFOA.
Yeah, thank you.
So, something that we'll continue to explore with you as we move into phase two.
So, Madam President, the GFOA recommendation of two months, did it used to be three months? It's always been a two-month operating revenue?
The current best practice is two months. I'm not sure the actual date of that best practice, but we have been operating under the two months, and GFOA will currently tell you two months.
So, Jeff, if there was an emergency, some sort of emergency in Hamilton County, where would we pull that money from? I understand the operating revenues that we would need, but if there was some type of, you know...
Depending upon the type of emergency, it would largely come from our, from our general fund reserve balance. Correct. Right. And this is a particular area that, you know, right now, while we are fluctuating a little bit below 15% in the past, that reserve balance has dropped significantly lower than this, especially when we were back in '08 and '09, and we had the contract with Butler County, sending inmates from our Justice Center to Butler County. We ultimately stopped that contract because we were literally at the risk of not making payroll at one period in time. So, we've had some success in getting the balance back up to where it is now, but we're still not quite to that healthy level.
So, this is inclusive of operating revenues and emergency if things happen?
This, yeah. So, this would be the reserve, the end of the year reserve balance, that if, yes, if there was an emergency expenditure that would be required, it would come from here. Correct.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I may, the, I know that 15% is the best practice. I've always understood, though, that, you know, in broad strokes, that a range of 5% to 15%, while certainly not a best practice, represents a minimally acceptable standard. And we're in, we're certainly above 5%.
You are.
Although, the time period that Administrator Ludo was referencing, we were at a 3% reserve at that point, and that was it. We had been hit so hard. So, we've, we, you know, the great thing about this is that even in the worst of times, from a revenue perspective, due to the Great Recession and gradually trying to grow out of that, we have not only maintained an above-board balance, but we have increased our reserve balance during all those tough times. And so, if... And so if you want to talk about budget discipline being exercised by this board under both Republican and Democratic administrations, you see that reflected in our commitment to elevating our reserve dollars to the degree that we have. What is our percentage, or what was our percentage in '18? Jeff, where did we end up? And what's, where are we if the estimate for '19?
John, do you know what our, do you have the budget document that shows exactly what the percentage is? I don't want to misstate it.
We ended '18 at 13 and 1/2.
13 and 1/2.
Say 13, yeah.
13 and 1/2, okay. And if this target for 2019 holds true, $32.5 million on a slightly smaller budget of $39.9, any idea what that is, John?
I don't, because in the projection report we sent last week, I believe it's in the order of 13, I think we're creeping toward 14%.
Yeah, okay. So we're not at 15. I mean, I...
We're getting closer.
That is the target, but we have gone a long way from 3%.
Agreed.
And, yeah, and we are almost at the 15% best-practice recommendation.
Yes.
Which we want to be at, but in terms of gross percentages, 14 versus 15, it's not like we don't have a reserve balance that will be able to sustain us through everything except the most extreme downfall.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as we move into the operational assessment, I had mentioned that we met with and conducted over 30 interviews. We also conducted a survey, and we read a lot of your documentation over the last handful of months. And wanted to share with you some of our observations from an operational perspective that might be opportunities to enhance revenue or to potentially cut costs through some different ideas. And so some of those observations, that we did uncover some duplication that might exist in some support functions, or those traditional back-office functions, such as finance operations, IT, across the county enterprise. There also appears to be some challenges with attracting and retaining staff, particularly in higher-skilled areas. We've been told, and again, this might be an area for further analysis in Phase Two, due to compensation for those higher-skill areas. You'll see some recommendations in that area for validation. Personnel expenses are on the rise. You probably have seen that as well. Healthcare costs have been increasing, so benefits are a significant portion of that. Deferrals in maintenance of your facilities has continued to be pushed out. And that is something that we did dig a little bit into in Phase One, and believe it is an area for continued analysis in Phase Two, is what to do about the deferred maintenance that has been pushed out due to really the lack of funding, and how to help turn that around going forward. Another area we uncovered was a lot of the IT systems are aging, and that might be an opportunity to create efficiencies. Of course, with IT replacement comes an investment. At the other end, though, might be an opportunity for some efficiencies to be gained that over time might save some money. The opioid epidemic appears to be impacting the workload of public safety and judicial services. Again, this would be an area that we would believe might be an opportunity for some further analysis. Program areas, including most non-mandated services, have been cut or reduced since 2009, actually, probably 2008. And so wanted to highlight some of those, and then we'll pause here for some questions. On the next few slides, what we did was also look at all of the cost-reduction opportunities that we heard about through our interviews. And going back to 2008, we went back to the budget books and looked at all of the cost-reduction initiatives that have happened over the timeframe. And on the next two slides, you will see those cost-reduction initiatives that have happened at the county, which total over $68.7 million if they were all done in one year. A lot of great work has been done, from the county perspective, of looking for those opportunities to reduce costs over the last 11 years we've been looking at the financials, to create those efficiencies within the departments. I'll give you a minute to read through that list, and happy to answer any questions you Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Not related to those, but related to the slide before it.
Sure.
Where you talk about duplication and then also aging systems that create inefficiencies. So I want to, I think we talked a little bit about the IT systems and how they don't, the IT systems throughout the county don't, aren't coordinated with one another, and how that creates some tremendous inefficiencies amongst the different departments. And I heard this when I first started.
Right.
And others first started at the same time, saying, "What do you mean they don't talk to each other?" I mean, so, and I recognize that in order to make that happen, there has to be an investment in kind of a broad IT retrofit to make that happen, but I, and I guess the deeper dive will also get into this, but it seems to me that that is one obvious area where, while it might take capital outlay to begin with, there are efficiencies to be gained there, particularly as, if we could coordinate any, you know, the IT systems so there aren't redundancies in these inefficiencies that you've identified.
Absolutely, President. We agree with you. We believe it's an area that we should focus in, in Phase Two together, to uncover those opportunities, and to look at how using modern platforms and technology can provide services online, can enhance workflow, information sharing across agencies. It appears there are some opportunities there for further exploration.
Thank you.
Madam President. Alicia, I didn't see in the, the cost-reduction initiatives that were actually acted upon, the majority of which took place in 2009, and then you also have one item in 2010, were the bulk of the initiatives. And that's reflective of the fact that at that time, we were in a real emergency, and we didn't dilly-dally, we took action.
Did.
And it was swift, and it was difficult, and it was hard.
Yes.
You know, the closure of the 20, or 822-bed Queens Gate Jail meant not only that that jail was closed, but there were a couple hundred sheriff's deputies in uniform who were let go at the same time in order to follow through. Bless you on the full impact of that. I didn't see reflected in here as well, the two weeks of furlough that we required of county employees during this same timeframe. Is that something you didn't know about, or it's just picked up somewhere else in the list?
Yes, we likely talked about it during our interviews, and is accounted for in the cost savings.
Where, I guess, is what I'm asking you.
On this list, we probably didn't call it out specifically. We can definitely add it as we move this project forward.
Right, okay.
But it is in the financial projections and look-back analysis.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you listed reduction initiatives that we took. That was another, and separate initiative that was introduced and approved. And our employees, you know, they bit the bullet, along with everybody.
Nobody else.
There was no one exempt from this. Not the board, not the county administrator, nobody.
Everybody.
Everybody was subject to that.
Thank you. We'll make sure that gets added.
Madam President, I noticed on the cost-reduction initiatives, specifically two of them, have been incorporated back into the budget. So are you going to look at the ones that were made, and then we decided to put them back in the cost?
Yes, that has been something discussed as well, and how the new programs and services have come back online.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, it occurs to me that also, there was a hiring freeze put in place, I believe it was last year. See, because this, the year goes to 2017, and so again, I think we might be missing a little bit, but I just do want to recognize that this doesn't go through '18, where we continued to do cost-saving measures because we are in such financial straits. So I just want to acknowledge that some of that, and anecdotally, we still don't have anybody sitting out the front desk. Anecdotally, we're still failing, but that's happening everywhere.
It is.
Where positions have not been filled because we don't have the money to fill them. And so I just want to recognize that not all of that is quite captured in the chart.
Madam President?
Not being critical, it's just not, yeah.
Sorry, Commissioner Portune had something, I think.
Well, I was just going to say, to put it in perspective, and we're just one department, but this whole floor, this entire floor was filled. When I first started as a county commissioner with employees, administrative budget, personnel and employees, and just take a walk around the sixth floor today, and you'll realize how much reduction in staff there has been, just for this floor alone, in positions to help make things work. I was also reminded, Madam President, in your first year here, and it was your initiative, was that we have quarterly budget meetings with all of our departments. And that was a cost-savings, budget-enhancing initiative, where every quarter, we went over everyone's spending with them in the same room. And, and so to not meet separately and individually, but to meet with everybody at the same time in the same room.
Right.
There's a lot of peer pressure in there about why people weren't staying within budget if they weren't, because it was affecting everybody else in that room if they weren't. And so that was a 2017 initiative that was adopted also. And again, you know, we're kind of nitpicking on things.
No, that's okay. It's great discussion.
But the fact is, these are, this is a public report, public document, and we all have a vested interest in making sure that lists like these are complete. And because, you know, any cost-savings, cost-reduction initiatives we've done, this has been an annual thing that this board has been involved in. And so, again, I think that, I don't know if we talked about this specifically when we had our meeting, but it might be good to touch base with some of the folks who've been here during the time period captured also, and just ask that question. Look at this list. Can you think of any other initiative that was approved and implemented that's not listed?
Great feedback, Commissioner. We'll definitely do that as we continue the assessment.
And, Madam President, I just say, not to belabor that particular point, but I don't think, I think when we initially had looked at the slide, this wasn't meant to be all-inclusive at this point, but to the Commissioner's point, again, especially as a public document, we probably should make sure that we buttress that. For instance, there are, as I think the board is aware, there were some major buildings sold during this time. We sold both the Educational Service Center and 237 William Howard Taft. We also, over this period of time, implemented a lot of energy efficiency and water conservation measures in all of our county buildings to not just drive down costs in the long run, but to give us a return on investment so that we could actually afford to do some of the capital work that was deferred and that we had to do. So we had to think creatively about how we got stuff done. The other thing that John brought up relates more to the, kind of how the examples are shown in the years, and why it seems to be very heavily loaded towards 2008 through 2010. And John reminds me, and it's not off-base with what Commissioner Portune was saying, that as we reduced our budget staff from a fairly large department down to really just a handful of people, we really got away from doing departmental budgets that were, that were at a line-item basis and putting in place specific measures. And we got more into the mode of giving target budgets to departments and agencies and saying, "You just have to hit this." So again, that gets back to the point of doing a deeper dive with some of those departments to find out how they met budget, as Commissioner Portune said. But when we, we got to the point of just saying, "Here's your budget. You meet it. We don't care how you meet it, but you just got to, you got to meet it." Whereas in the past, from eight through 10, even going back much further than that, we were working closer with departments to identify specific efficiencies and initiatives that we would implement. And that's a lot of what you see in eight through 10.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff. Yes, this information was pulled from the budget books directly, so that makes a lot of sense, what changes in staffing and approach.
And I do, correct me if I'm wrong, so the title is "Cost-Reduction Initiatives." So it does not capture all of the cuts that were made, particularly in the last couple budget cycles, because, you know, I feel like this is more, although I see some, a little bit of deviation in that, but these are strategies that were employed to have ongoing budget-reduction impacts, as opposed to, "We're not filling positions right now."
Correct.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, and I am guilty of it myself, trying to differentiate those two things, because, yeah, I think I could, just off the top of my head, create a few more lines here. So anyways, I do think that though needs to be spelled out, that it's not as if those strategies or initiatives didn't carry forward, but there were also other just cuts that took place.
Sure.
Right? Okay.
And, Madam President, that's a great observation, and definitely something that we have noted too, and that we've discussed through interviews as well. A lot of really great things have gone on to put the budget into balance every year, and to look at those opportunities for efficiencies, and looking at opportunities with staffing is one of those, one of those areas that we looked at as well.
Okay, thank you.
One other area, since we are in budget season, is we did look at your proposed 2020 budget. And while we're in the middle of our assessment right now, we wanted to at least acknowledge that we understand that your 2020 budget is in process. And Hamilton County, similar to many communities, have continued to see those declining revenues, which haven't fully recovered. We do understand that you're projecting a structural imbalance in your five-year pro forma from the general fund. And that is even with assuming that a quarter of a percent sales tax is added starting mid-2020 to fund your general fund. And so as we're looking at this assessment, and looking at needing to close a $20 million gap in the general fund for 2020, utilizing that quarter of a percent sales tax within the 2020 budget season makes sense when coupled with efficiencies, and allows us to continue to look into the Phase Two longer-term opportunities to dig deeper into those efficiencies and cost savings and revenue enhancement opportunities. A lot of those will require more time than can be implemented within one budget season, and some of them will also, as we've talked about already, include the need for some investment to realize those efficiency of overtime. We have identified a number of potential opportunities for further exploration, and wanted to highlight a number of them today.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'm sorry, but, I keep interrupting you.
You are fine, Commissioner Portune.
Will we move on on that? Getting back to your look at the 2020 budget, I think it's really important for your study and whatever your final report recommendations say, is to touch on this point. That is, every year that I've handled a budget, so this, I guess, is my 19th now as a commissioner, and I had eight budgets that I worked on at the city of Cincinnati. Every budget comes out with a report that, you know, the city, the county is looming, you know, facing a X-number-dollar deficit.
Sure.
Okay. And that's a byproduct of the fact that, that people are reporting on, and it comes out this way. So I'm not blaming anybody in the fourth estate about this at all. I'm just saying the manner in which these numbers are put out to the public and then react to them is, you have departments that present wish lists, and you have budget directors and county administrators who respond to that with realities, and you look at the two, they don't match up, and whoa. And you look at the two, they don't match up, and whoa, the county's got a, you know, $30 million budget deficit. I should have used a different number, I didn't use that number on, you know, for any reason at all, it just came out that way. But so much, I think, rests on your report, the accuracy of it, in terms of not only how we approve or approach the 2020 budget, but many other things. Because the public needs to fully understand where we are right now, and where we're going to be unless things change. And not react to the boy who cried wolf a thousand times scenario that happens when we talk budgets, when, when they are originally discussed in a wish list versus reality type of a setting. So I guess, in your report, however it ends up, the numbers that you are portraying in terms of budget deficiencies, and the ability to have a sustainable budget year in and year out, and the necessity for it, has to be done in ways that, that make certain that we're talking about real numbers, not wish numbers. Real numbers on an ongoing basis with anticipated budget initiatives still applying, or budget reduction initiatives still applying, again, not wish list numbers. And, and you have to stand behind that, because the reason you're involved in this in the first place is, is not only for our benefit in budgeting and planning, but to help educate the public on what the real lay of the land is. We thought we had done a great job with that last year, it turned out that we were very unsuccessful in our efforts in educating the public. So this is a big step where we are depending upon, in the, you, to give us numbers that are beyond any reproach at all.
Understood, Commissioner, and we are working with you on that, and look forward to continuing to do that analysis alongside the team here, to get to those, that a final assessment report.
Okay.
Madam President, as it relates to the pro forma that you have here.
Yes.
I'm going to assume the .25, if that does not pass. Are you going to give us some alternatives or strategies as it relates to that?
So a couple of thoughts. We have, on the next few slides, a handful of efficiencies. We have not done that analysis yet to determine what the cost saves would be, that would be a phase two item as we move those forward. I don't believe you will achieve that $20 million of savings in calendar year 2020 through implementation, right? It takes some time to move there, and I don't know the value of those yet, that will be part of phase two. So at this point, we do not have that analysis ready for you. Jeff.
And Madam President, Madam Commissioner, I would also just say that as we get, go through the budget process, you know, to the degree the board desires to look at alternative budgets, we have, and as we get into the budget hearing process, we have a list of the major budget drivers that are, that correlate to that, to the current structural deficit. So, you know, ultimately, you know, when you're talking about things like addressing the 911 funding issue, addressing deferred maintenance, investing in economic development, community revitalization, looking at treatment services in the jail, there are some levies that need to be continually subsidized out of the general fund, primarily related to public safety. So as we get into, I mean, that's, those are the components of the structural deficit in addition to the more mundane things like healthcare, employee compensation, those types of things. So as we get into it, to the degree the board, you know, wants alternatively, as we can look at, okay, this is what a budget looks like without these things. And you can just start to pair that back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I just want to say, related to this chart, because it assumes the .25 increase, the pro forma.
Yes.
And we are expenses over revenue already in 2023, so it's a little concerning. But that said, could it be expected that if the 25 were to go into effect and start to stabilize things, that efficiencies might be able to kick in, say, by '23, '24? If we were to make, you know, the investment, say, in '20 or '21, then we might likely see some reduction in expenses, hopefully, by the time we get, I mean, I, that, I know that's ongoing, but I wonder if that could be an impact as we kind of move through, because this pro forma is frankly a little concerning. Because this assumes an increase of .25, and we're already imbalanced in 2023. So that's not a great projection, unless we expect that some efficiencies are going to come into play here, and maybe it reduces the level of expenses. Right, I mean, am I reading that correctly?
You are, and to be clear, this pro forma was the pro forma provided to us by, by your team as part of the 2020 budget process, but you read it the same way we do. So we're looking at opportunities of how do we help move that needle longer term, with the hope that those cost reduction strategies, or opportunities to create efficiencies, or increase revenue in different ways, could help impact that in 2023 and beyond.
Yeah, and I'm not being critical, it's just striking, that even with this effort of the 25s, it's been recommended by the administrator, it's not as if, you know, we've got a very high increase in revenue related to expenses.
Right. It doesn't solve the challenge long-term.
It certainly does not.
It helps, it definitely helps, but it's not solved, we agree.
Well, and as we look at efficiencies, then it gives us a little bit of time to say, okay, let's stabilize, and then, you know, because we can't do it all at once, we've got to gradually, and the efficiencies aren't going to bear fruit right away.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam President, I would just say that you pick up on a very good insight, and I think the way I looked at this in terms of putting together the budget is where we are now versus where we would be in '23 and '24, is right now, there is literally so much that we can't do as an organization, just in terms of the care and feeding of the organization, the people, the buildings and the systems that drive the work of county government. Getting to a point in '23 and '24 where we have what I would not term structural budget gaps, but just managerial gaps, things that we can manage around, either through the implementation of efficiencies, or through just deliberative policy choices of the board, decide on an annual basis, we're going to choose to do less of this, less of that, as opposed to having to say, we're just not going to defund deferred maintenance this year. We have, we, we know we're going to go over budget on our, on our healthcare spend, so we have to figure out another way to take, another place to take that from. Those are the types of conversations I think we want to have, on, in terms of managing those gaps, not the conversation, the conversations we're having this year and in the years past.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So as we have moved into our wrap-up of Phase One, where we've casted a wide net across the county from a financial and operational perspective, we're looking for those areas of potential opportunity for further exploration, and I wanted to highlight a few. As we looked at opportunities, we have categorized them into six categories, looking at operating models, looking at revenues, people, process, technology, and then also your facilities or your buildings. And as we consider these different areas, we'd like to look at it from a business driver perspective, and what are some implementation considerations with these different opportunities? So for business drivers, we're always asking, is this an opportunity to increase revenue? Reduce cost, avoid cost, does this reoccur? I think that's important, you want to know if it's a one-time, or is it something that you can achieve on a recurring basis? And does it create operational efficiencies? And we know not every opportunity is going to hit on every business driver, but these are different considerations, and having a mix of opportunities that support different business drivers will help us achieve the long-term sustainability that I know we all desire for the county. As we look at implementation considerations, as we've already discussed, some opportunities may be more complex and less complex to implement. The timeframe might be shorter or longer, and there might be a financial cost to implement. So these are all areas that we're looking at during Phase Two, to achieve that balance and mix in that, I'll call it the opportunity portfolio, to be able to help move that needle long-term, to achieve the financial stability for the county. I wanted to highlight a few of those opportunities today, that are potential opportunities for further exploration. Under operating model, explore some opportunities for some shared services across the enterprise. So look at how finance, procurement, HR, IT is delivered, and look at that in a more coordinated fashion. From a revenue perspective, assess the cost of delivering the services, and look at opportunities to align fees with delivery of the cost of services. Explore opportunities to increase revenue through maybe grants and other intergovernmental funds. And I think it's important to continue to assess the overall tax environment, looking at sales, property and other use taxes. From a people perspective, we heard loud and clear from a compensation study perspective, especially in those high-skill areas. And explore strategic talent management, how are people doing in the right spots at the right time? How are we investing in them? From a retention perspective is going to be critical for the county's success moving forward as well. On a process basis, exploring ways to increase the economic base through coordinated economic development activities. We've hit on some economic development items today, looking at the long-term strategically of coordinated economic development. I know you definitely have an economic development arm today, too, how do we even build upon that success and create more opportunities to strengthen that economic base within the county? Explore countywide grants management, and explore enhanced budget to actuals process. Getting everybody to the table might be one of those opportunities. From an information technology perspective, explore an enterprise IT plan, how do we coordinate those resources, how do we work together? And explore opportunities to create efficiencies, and look at opportunities to provide services online, which also might reduce some costs long-term. And from a building or facility perspective, exploring opportunities for county-owned real estate, and I understand a study might already be in process on that one, which is exciting to work alongside. So those are just some potential opportunities that we've uncovered for, for Phase Two in those categories. Happy to answer any questions on those opportunities.
Madam President.
Mm-hmm.
Alicia, when you were looking at this, did you consider just those direct county operations, or did you extend your analysis of opportunities for further exploration to those entities that we spend money on, but have more of an indirect effect with? So I'll give you an example.
Thank you.
We've done a lot, though I know there's a lot more we can do with respect to shared services internally. We started with the city a few years back to try to look at a joint shared services approach. We convened a joint committee, we had some meetings, we adopted a couple of things, but that never materialized into the robust enterprise that it should have become.
Sure.
And that it should be, not just with Cincinnati, but with each of the other 48 jurisdictions in the county. Opportunities to save money there through shared services, but by your own admission, not really explored from a total fiscal impact. So too, with respect to boards and commissions that we support financially, and as well that we support through appointments of board members, either a majority of same, or just some lesser number, but we are sending appointees to. And I guess I would say, isn't it true that there may be some other shared services opportunities there with those different boards and commissions to explore? Because we have a direct financial interest in them, as well as a personnel interest in them, and they are reliant upon our money and our people, to some degree. So as a consequence, what might we be able to do there? And, you know, on and on with respect to other things. But I use that one example simply to help elaborate on what I'm talking about here. And outside of the, the, what is the county's proper, you know, direct area of coverage, you know, involving nothing but county employees, county departments.
Yeah, absolutely, and understood, Commissioner Portun. Yes, we have, we have discussed that, and in fact, from an operating model perspective, we're not limiting it to the county.
Yeah.
So looking at, maybe starting from a shorter-term perspective, from a county perspective, and then look at opportunities of how do you partner with other municipal entities within the county to deliver these, I'll call them back office services.
Yeah.
That we all need, that we need our finances to run, we need HR, we need IT.
Right.
But is there greater buying power if we do it together? And so that's definitely on the table, and is, this is not limited to the county specifically.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so I would say, beyond governmental entities, though, think of other boards and commissions, almost that whole other shadow arm of county government, and I don't mean that in a nefarious way.
Understood.
But element of how we do the business of the county, simply by supporting those other boards with money, or with personnel, or both.
Yep, definitely something that we can drill into through this operating model discussions in Phase Two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. So when you look at the assessed cost of delivering services and aligned fees, we did some of this in the previous budget, where we, I specifically remember talking about permitting fees and some of the things that happened in the Planning and Development Department, and trying to understand kind of where we sit at this moment in time, what's reasonable, what's not pricing us out of the market, that kind of stuff. Do you, do you have any examples of anything that you saw that you said to yourself, oh, that fee is not quite reflective of the service that's being provided, and here's an example of where we could afford to increase a fee? Or is that Phase Two?
So Jeff, I don't know if you have anything off the top of your head. I would say, overall, through interviews, we were asking the question of, when's the last time we did this benchmarking? Of course, that example that you just shared came up, but beyond that, there were not a lot of examples. And creating a model where you're able to consistently update your, your fees, as you would like, based on the cost of delivering services, could be a best practice for the county going forward. So part of this would be creating that long-term model, that you can continuously update, so you can align, if you choose, the cost of service delivery with the cost of providing that service. Do you have an example?
Yeah, thank you, Alicia. So Commissioner, specifically there were, we didn't dig into a specific fee in a lot of the comparative analysis, but looking at the consistency and the process and the timing of which those are reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
So in compiling the inventory and the age of the inventory, and the available information of when they were last reviewed and updated, a lot of inconsistency. And I think the process by which they're evaluated was the same way. So it's more of a, looking at it from, what's the process, what's the expected timeline, to your point of how do we do it an effective way to compare with our peers, and also the services that are critical to those that we serve.
So you're talking more about having a more standard practice where we evaluate the fees.
Correct.
On a regular basis, to make sure all of those things align.
Correct.
As opposed, I mean, there might be some opportunity here, and maybe not, maybe we're right where we need to be, but I guess this, this idea that we should take a look at that periodically.
Yeah, and it'd be a strategic part of operations versus necessarily a reflection, and not to say that it's, imply what the current process is, but to use it as part of your broader strategy to support the operations.
Would you anticipate that being a department-by-department evaluation?
I think we would look at that as part of Phase Two, to identify what's the most effective way to do that, whether it be department-by-department, or a committee that works collaboratively to look at that process, and identify how they can take it back, or centralize, not the service, but the process assessment.
So, yeah, the, so the, the policy directive would be more of a collective, you know, this is what we think makes sense, and, but then the actual process of evaluating those fees would be department-by-department, as they, you know, do it on whatever timeframe is reasonable, say, okay, it's time to take a look at this comparatively and see where we sit.
Right, aligning with the strategy and the appetite for how quick to do it, and how broad to do it, and balancing those with resource.
Okay. Okay. I have one other question, related to economic development. So you talk about, explore ways to increase economic base through coordinated economic development activities. Are you referring to the community development that we do, we get some dollars from the federal government, and then strategically have those allocated out throughout the county? There's an application process and the grant process.
Sure.
And so we are partnering with some of our local communities, it's really to catalyze economic development in these communities and areas that they have defined as strategic areas for them. We also do a little bit of investing, not as much as we have in the past, but we're doing what we can, with some of our partners through Ready and the doing what we can, with some of our partners through Ready and the Port Authority and some other organizations like that. So I just didn't know which, maybe you're referring to both, but which specifically you're referring to in that bullet point?
Referring to holistically.
Okay.
All opportunities, and really looking strategically of how, through targeted programs, services, and an economic development space, how do you continue to increase the economic base for the county?
Okay, so it's really all of the above?
All of the above.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah.
I'd like to go back to what President Drehouse was talking about, about the fines and forfeitures, because I totally agree with her. When you look at the general, general fund revenues, we're getting 3%, we're higher than those other four counties. But, so we could assume that our fines are higher, we could assume that, we don't want to assume, or it could be because of our enforcement, I'm not sure. But I think it would be great to see comparatively for those other counties where we line up as far as the amount of fees that we're charging for different things. I think it would be good to see.
Agreed, Commissioner, and I think that'd be a great area for, for Phase Two, for their exploration. It was one of those areas, as we casted a wide net, we're like, this is an interesting area to probably drive into in Phase Two. So thank you, yes.
Can I just, it's interesting to note, then, as you go back to that chart, churches for services were quite a bit higher than our peer counties.
Yes, yes.
So I don't, I don't know, maybe it's a mixed bag, but.
It's one of those areas, I think it, it strikes us as, hey, something's here, let's uncover it, let's understand it some more, let's benchmark it some more. And I think that's the benefit of doing this in a multi-phased approach. It allows us to be able to explore those areas that we have further questions in as we move up forward.
Yep.
Madam President?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Do you need to add, based on your and Jeff's sidebar?
We are good.
Yeah.
We're good.
You're good?
We're good, I promise.
All right. I was cool with it, I mean, that's fine, don't worry about it.
We're having a little committee meeting over here.
I just wondered if there was something else that you had to offer, that's all. Before I started on another long-winded question, all right? My, you know, related to economic development, I have raised this periodically in the past about the need for us to be able to drill deep enough in, in how we are spending our economic development dollars, such that when we make investments, we are able to, within a reasonable degree of certainty, quantify what the return on that investment will be case-specific, I mean, drilling down that much, so that, that we know if we're going to invest with, pick your entity, and I won't name an entity because I don't want to single anybody out, but if we are going to invest with one of the, the partners that we work with, then we know, upon approving that in our budget, that X dollars will go for this, and this, and this. And we know, based upon past practice, or based upon just how those things work, to a reasonable degree of certainty, that it will generate within so many months or years why dollars coming back to us. As opposed to, we're just investing with partners who are involved in, you know, generally the work of, that's related to, that, that, you know, we, we kind of lose sight of, of where the money goes after that, and we can't quantify exactly what our return is. And, and then, as a matter of policy, decide if those factors create sufficient grounds to adopt a policy. So I'm, I'm not saying necessarily that we would only do, you know, A versus B, maybe there's a reason to combine them, I don't know. But I do think that, that we need to do a better job of, than we do in general, when we talk about our investments in development, in knowing how much money we're going to get back based upon that investment. You know, almost unto the point that when we make the investment, and, and whatever the, the formula is or the criteria are, you know, spin back, yes, you'll get X number of dollars in, in 2020, and, you know, then a few more in 2021, that we, we can literally sort of account for those in a special category of our revenues for that year, as it relates to our budgeting practices. Now, John Brugan over here and Jeff Aluta are having heart attacks when I say that.
They look fine.
But I, I do mean, I do mean, though, that, that, that our investment is almost such a sure thing, that it's as if the, the money is in hand, and at least to account for that somehow, when we're making long-term estimates and, and predictions about what our revenues are going to be compared with our expenses, so that we can have, you know, a few more pieces of information determining what a pro forma might really look like that many years down the road.
Yeah, great observation and, and great, and it definitely does tie to our explore ways to increase economic base through coordinated economic development activities. I'm not sure if you've been, if you've seen this before, I'm not sure we asked the question yet as we have been going through Phase One, but you could always do an economic impact study on a new development to understand what that return on that investment could be, looking at indirect and direct opportunities. So that's something that could be part of this planning process to implement, to understand what that return could be over a period of time.
Yeah, yeah, and, and if we're unable to, to make that kind of a determination, because of the nature of the investment, then that either suggests that, that, you know, we reconsider whether we should do that investment, or at least we'll raise questions that will have to be answered in our budgeting process about how that money's going to be used and on what, and what will it generate.
Going forward, yes, absolutely. So not to get too edgy, but there is a methodology that we've seen communities use around economic impact studies, using multiple players that exist that you're probably familiar with, to help assess what is that economic impact to Hamilton County specifically.
Right.
Over a period of time, making the assumption that investment had been made, and what is the payoff there. So that could be something to explore in the future as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to go back to a chart.
Sure.
These numbers are so tiny, I think it's chart number eight.
I see what chart you're seeing.
The financial assessment chart. Can you, we're looking at 2018 general fund revenues, which I think is really helpful because that is current information, right?
It is.
And so, or relatively current. So could you add a column here that, because it, it is so striking that because we are not as reliant on sales tax as other counties, we then become overly reliant on other things, which has been talked about a number of times here amongst all three of us. Is there a way to put another box here that says if the 2019, or, or if, if the recommendation from the administration were to move forward, what, what, and if there were to be this, say, quarter increase in sales tax, how then does that situate us? Because these are percentages, and everything will, will fluctuate then, right? It'll all change. So I want to get a better sense of the recommendation relative to these kinds of numbers.
Absolutely.
And what other counties are, now, it does occur to me that actually this is a little old information, because 19's not in here, but I, I think it's, it might be helpful for us to see how that, related to all these other things, would play out.
Great.
Can you do that?
Great observation, be happy to do that analysis. And yes, 2018 was used, it was the last full year that we had access to. So agreed, looking at the 2019 or 2020 with a potential difference in structure here, will definitely be something we can do.
Right, and of course, other counties may change, you know, what, what they are doing, but I just think with this recommendation, we need to see what that increase in the sales tax looks like relative to where we sit right now.
Absolutely, something we can definitely look to as we continue the assessment process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Questions or comments?
I have no other questions.
Commissioner Portun?
No, that, just one observation based upon the analysis you just went through, which was, you know, a great observation, is that it may open up opportunities then to look at, at how to address some of these other areas. And if you just said that and I didn't hear it, Denise, I'm sorry.
Well, no, but.
But I'm looking at property tax versus sales tax in particular.
Yeah.
And you've got Cuyahoga where their budget is only dependent on property taxes to the tune of 3%. Montgomery, 8%, Franklin, a little more, 10%, but here we are at 16. And the reason is exactly what you just went through, is because our sales tax, total sales tax is so low percentage-wise compared to other counties. And if that changed, not only, how would that change those numbers, but in consideration of all the various things we do then with that, what does it suggest for us in terms of how any of those other numbers might change?
Yep.
That could maybe put us in a more competitive basis still compared to other counties.
Yep, well, that's what I'm getting at.
Part of it, yeah.
Absolutely.
What that would look like if we were to accept the recommendation, that's what I'm asking.
Madam President, just one final question for me, as it relates to the process.
Sure.
Are you, have you completed Phase One? Are you still in Phase One, moving to Two?
We're wrapping up Phase One, and we'll get some additional analysis done that we've discussed here today, and then we'll be moving into Phase Two, so we're at the middle mark right now.
Okay.
With the goal of wrapping up Phase Two by the end of January of 2020.
Thank you.
So, yeah, on that time, thank you.
Good information.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the questions today. I appreciate it.
And I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you've done. I know you've spent a lot of time here at the county. We thank you for all of this information, all the analysis that you've done. I also want to make sure that we thank the CBC and the CRBC, our partners in all of this, for allowing us to move forward with this analysis, because I really think it's important that we have an outside organization with a lot of credibility look at the operations of the county. So, and I'm grateful also to staff and everybody, I know everybody participated in this, and a lot of time has been spent.
Madam President, one person who's not here today is Lisa Webb, and Lisa has been the, the point person from the county staff. She is on business, but just away from the office today, so just wanted to thank Lisa.
Thank you, thanks for noting that. So lastly, then, I want to note that we've got two public hearings outside the building coming up, October 3rd at 6:30 at the Sharonville Convention Center, and October 8th at 6:30 at the Silverton Municipal Building. Those are our two hearings, and then we've got one back in the building. So thank you so much for this information. We will digest it as we move through the budget process, but very, very grateful for your partnership here, so. Jeff, is there anything else?
Nothing else.
Anything else, commissioners?
No.
No? Okay, great. Then I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumarjuno?
Yes.
Commissioner Portun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.